It's like watching popcorn pop, it feels like, you know, you get the numbers coming up seventy-five kind of holding tight.
Okay, I hereby call it order the February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, the Cohasset School Committee. This otherwise in-person public meeting is being held virtually in accordance to Governor Baker's order of a declaration, or excuse me, a declaration of emergency, state of emergency in this Commonwealth. However, it is being broadcasted live on Cohasset one four three TV as well as Facebook. And the meeting is being held, of course, via Zoom. At this point, I'd ask that any school committee members that are present, please indicate so. Enroll call, Mrs. Coleri.
Present.
Mr. Kearney.
Present.
Mrs. Mar.
Present.
Mrs. Saint Ange.
Present.
Present Craig McClellan, all committee members are present as of six oh two P M. First agenda item is always public comment. Again, this section is related to agenda items that are not otherwise on the agenda. If your remarks relate to pretty much the only agenda item tonight, which is the return to elementary schools, please wait until we get there in the meeting to make those comments. Otherwise, any unrelated comments are welcome at this time. I'll give it a second to see if there are any. Dr. Sullivan, Sean Galvin of one four three Fort Hill Street in Hingham. He asked any word, any word on senior class events such as last day, prom, class night, graduation, et cetera.
Yes, Sean, that that's a good question. We have done a lot of work. But I say we specifically Principal Scott and team this week. And Mrs. Moriarty working on that to try to make sure we can not only confirm them, but be able to communicate them. All I can say is it's forthcoming very soon. You know, clearly, we're looking at regulations and guidelines and some changing regulations. And that has kind of bounced us around a bit, but the community can expect that communication very shortly. And it's just sort of a product of that, of the changing regulations that have have made us kind of about face a bit recent of recent days. And so you should be, I would say, in the next week or so, getting more definitive information on everything from seniors' last day to graduation to graduation date anyway, to some senior events very shortly.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks. I just want to say thanks for your patience, both seniors and senior families of seniors out there. I know these are important events. Just know that there's some good events and a lot of thinking and planning going on behind the scenes to help you out.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. See you for the comments and move on to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. So at this point, I turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman McClellan. And thank you, everyone, for being here. We have quite a robust participant list, about ninety-eight folks, so that's great. We'll start off just with a few updates for me. Obviously, our one sports season's ending and other sports season is beginning. We started our fall too, which is in the middle of the winter, which is odd, but we started that on Monday with practices happening. The the sport season was very successful. And we it ended with some some great accomplishments, Lauda League All-Stars. We had a thousand-point scorer in basketball, Liam Cunnion. Congratulations to Liam. We had SSL Tobin Coach of the Year in his first year, Coach Vincenzi, who's our girls' basketball coach. And I'm sure I'm missing accolades, and I'm sure we'll have Athletic Director Vatundi back to talk a little more about them at some point. But that was very successful, and it was heartwarming being in here over the weekend. Well, not actually, that wasn't heartwarming. The heartwarming part was when I was in here over the weekend watching the fleets of families. It was really family event to get the the field ready. So I just want to say, you know, express my admiration for that, for for the families to shovel it off so they're not damaging the turf and to do it very well and to see them out there practicing over the last few days was was just just great, just nice to see them back and be able to talk to a few kids as they're coming off the field today. They're feeling really good about, you know, this and the opportunity. So it takes a village, and I could certainly see that in full effect with the shoveling of the field. And we're excited for it. We're excited and, you know, to give our kids opportunity. And that's really what the heart of this meeting is. It's about increasing opportunities for our kids, our students. So I'm really looking forward to updating the the school committee on where we are with the plan. But speaking of students, I will want to turn it over for a bit to Jenna Giglio. I always say your name wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was close. Jenna is a member of our Superintendent's Advisory Council, Student Advisory Council. We did have a nice meeting this week, and I'm sure she'll update a little on that. And then any other thing she wants to update on and obviously give the committee a chance to ask any questions of Jenna. So Jenna, go ahead, take it away.
Okay, so hi, everyone. Great to see you all again. I know it's been a while since the last time I talked. I talked to it was before Christmas break. But I hope you all had a great February vacation. I know I did. And Cohasset High School, we've just kind of been easing into our new routine, just because the semester, the spring semester started the Friday before February break. So this week has just kind of been back into like the introductory periods in our new classes, and it's just been great to see new faces and new teachers. And everyone's just kind of been adjusting to that. I know Dr. Sullivan just talked about winter sports wrapping up. That's another thing I wanted to update on. I was very happy. The swim team put together like a great senior night. And overall, I know all the winter sports have, which is a complete success. All of my friends and a lot of the other students had a lot of fun, and it's just great that everyone got to play it out like normal with some playoffs. And yeah, it was just, it was a great experience. I was very happy to have a somewhat normal swim experience in the winter. And I know a lot of the football players are super excited about their season, although they had to shovel the field, which is something different that they'd never had to do before. But there was a lot of there was a lot of excitement at school this week for the football team, and I'm really happy for them. I know all the other teams are as well. I'm excited to watch their games. And we had our Super Student Advisory Meeting yesterday, which I'm very happy to announce that we have our new eighth graders that finally joined us yesterday. Nathan, Grace, and Ella. And I'm sure that they will do a great job on these meetings later on, and I'm really excited to work with them and show them around high school next year. And it was great to hear their perspectives when we met with Ms. Lisa Radden, and she met with us and we kind of discussed like what we want our new classroom environments to be like moving forward, like after COVID. Hopefully, after COVID, and when we're all back together in a somewhat normal environment, she wanted us to share what we think those classrooms would look like, and that was like a really fun activity. And I'm definitely going to be reaching out to some other classmates about what they think their ideal classroom would be after COVID, what what the environment would be like after COVID. But other than that, not much has really been happening around school. We've just kind of been getting back into this new routine, like I mentioned earlier. And I'm really excited to be back. This week was super fun. It was great to see everybody and get the connections in person rather than virtually. So it was great to see everyone, and I'm and I'm happy to be back on this. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Jenna. And it should be said that this past week was our first meeting where we actually had our eighth grade student representatives there too. So we had Nathan Aschar, Ella Lynch, and Grace Shauna Siebel with us, and it was nice to see them come into the team and for Jenna and group to embrace them as as a really important contributing group. So thank you for doing that, Jenna. Questions for Jenna? Anything or any topics the committee wants to bring up with Jenna?
Anything? No? Okay, thank you so much, Jenna.
Jenna, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Look forward to seeing you soon.
Yep, thank you so much.
All right, take care. Bye-bye. Okay. Shall I proceed, Chairman McClellan?
Yes, but before you do, I just want to note, you know, this is obviously what everyone is here for. I do want to say that you know, at the last meeting, there was a lot of comments and questions about the middle and high school. This discussion is about the elementary school. So we will turn, we will not rest on our laurels, we will turn to the middle of high school. I, you know, it looks like we're putting that on the agenda for the next, very next meeting, which is next week. So and middle high school parents, we hear you, and you are absolutely reasonably concerned and understandably concerned. They need to be in schools just as much. We have not forgotten about them, but today is about the elementary school. So if your comments can be limited to that, to the elementary schools, that would be very much appreciated. With that, Dr. Sullivan.
Wonderful. Thank you, Craig. And I'm going to share my screen now. There we go. So, excuse me, a little preview here. Pardon me. There we go. All right. Sorry about that. We give you a strobe light effect. But I just, I thought I'd give an update on where we are. I know tonight we're going to be, or I'm going to be asking for a vote to bring our elementary students at Osgood and at Deer Hill back full in person, beginning on March first. And I want to talk a little bit about where we where we started, where we are, and then open it up for your consideration. So put together just a brief update presentation here to let you know kind of where we came from and where we are, just to sort of refresh everybody's memory on that. So just a bit of a timeline refresh, started really back in January, on January nineteenth, when we did inform the association that we had a target date of March first for return to full in-person learning at the elementary buildings and followed that quickly thereafter with a school committee meeting where we just had some initial discussions. And if you remember, I asked for a vote from the committee to continue those discussions and then to be able to present on February third, and you you had permitted that. Then we had a survey that, you know, clearly, before we could even get into it deeply, we needed to know A was the community interested? Did they feel that we, you know, they wanted to have their children back in in more full in time and in person? And also, we had to look at some operational concerns from a community perspective. Clearly, you know, we had to, we limited a bit on our remote, the amount of kids we can let in in a remote format. We needed to account for that with our TECA program. We had to make sure we could do it from that perspective. And then also, you know, we have concerns with transportation in our district. So we really had to ask if people could live with the transportation that we had available pretty much. And the answers to those two questions were overwhelmingly, the percentage of folks wanted their students back in person. We were able to handle and accommodate anyone who needed the remote situation. We sort of sent follow-up surveys on that and then on transportation. And transportation, a lot of folks did agree that, you know, it was worth, the juice is worth the squeeze, so to speak, to to go ahead and stay with their current cohort transportation. We did also, we were able to accommodate some folks who felt they absolutely needed it. But we thank the families for working with us in that regard. So those answers were were given, and then we were able to present a formal plan after some some collaboration. And the formal plan that we presented on February third was approved. But again, it wasn't a finalized vote because we had to have really a lot more conversations with our faculties, which we did. And I'll get into that in a minute, but we had a lot of conversations, operational conversations at the building levels. We have at the CTA. We did a lot of collaborating at that point. And then, as we had said in our earlier timeline, we were going to let the fourth graders, we said right up front, one of the things that was an obstacle was our large fourth grade, and we were going to have to form another section. So we went ahead and did that in preparation for the possibility of you voting it forward, because if we if we didn't have that set, then we would have no chance to go ahead and do that. And I want to thank, you know, I should say, I should have introduced Principal Sullivan and Principal Farrell, who were with me, forgive me, Principal Sullivan, Principal Farrell, should have done that right at the beginning. But Principal Sullivan and her team worked very hard to articulate what that class might be like through the placement process that they have in place and communicated that as a preparation, a potential preparation for the vote going through today. And as I said, we were going to work on setting up the classrooms and lunch areas. We've done that very well, very, very much in collaboration with staff in doing that. And here we are on the twenty-fourth, looking for the final, final vote. We will continue, if the vote goes through, to prepare. I did mention that there's a drop-off pickup scenario that we'll get into again today, just to review it. But there'd be placards distributed and possibly Principal Sullivan and Principal Farrell will let me know that that's happened already. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but we get to that, they can certainly jump in at any point. And then, if all goes well, and the the committee feels that it is something we should move on, I would, you know, ask for the vote. We will indeed bring our students back at both elementary schools full in person to begin, you know, a different kind of level of learning for this year, and that's a very exciting proposition and prospect. So some of the collaborations that have occurred. We did have meetings with CTA represent, representation and school committee. We scheduled two collaboration sessions, and we did, we were able to share insights and develop input into the plans, and you'll see some of the fruits of that later in this presentation. We also had heavy collaboration taking place at Osgood and Deer Hill. These included grade-level meetings, whole faculty meetings with built building and district leadership. I was able to attend recent meetings at both Deer Hill and Osgood to hear their operational concerns and to try to help as much as I could and their ideas, specialists and department meetings, and also individual meetings with the staff. You know, whenever you're looking at something that's that's like so, it needs to be operationalized at the at the building level, those conversations really need to happen deeply at the building level, and I feel like that that was what was happening. We also, I mentioned the fourth grade team collaborating about the new section. And it shouldn't go unsaid that a lot of collaboration is also taken, has taken place with our custodians, with our transportation. They've really been helpful and wonderful and working out, making sure the buses could accommodate the students. And then, of course, our food service and the Food Service Union, because some of our lunches have shifted in the way where we were facilitating lunches in terms of the space that's happening and has shifted. And then we did have discussions at both the Deer Hill and Osgood PSO meetings. So we did our best to be as collaborative as we could in building, in building the finalized plan. Some of the fruits of the labors with our Cohasset Teachers Association is we are, because of our conversations, permitting the teachers to access their paid sick days if their vaccination appointment falls within contractual hours. This represents a broadening of the grounds for which a teacher may access paid leave. And what that means is if they do end up going to someplace like Gillette or someplace that's a distance, that they'd be able to access their sick leave for that. And if they are indeed able to, and we hope this will happen as soon as possible, able to have an appointment within the town of Cohasset during contractual hours, then, you know, we would, we would not have any time deducted for sick leave or anything. They would just cover for them as they'd be able to go and do that. We are purchasing some plexiglass desk, desk panels, desk panels, used by classroom teachers or meeting individually with students within the classroom. It's something that the association felt was going to be a good measure. And I'm happy to say we're absolutely pursuing that and providing that for them in the classrooms. And I know, want to make it really clear, just as we did in when we introduced our roadmap to reentry, and we really looked at the first six weeks of school. In many, many ways, this is a new beginning. And we absolutely have to reflect on where the kids are after the first six weeks, and that's always a good guideline for any school year. And we really plan to do that as well, and that includes meeting with the CTA, if so desired. And absolutely hope that they'd want to do that. And then obviously, often offering that same opportunity for staff and families after six weeks to provide input and ideas about how things are going. Some of the preparations and scheduling, I did mention that, you know, we really have everything kind of set. Our rosters and specialist rotations are actually sent out to Osgood and Deer Hill staff before break. That is clearly a rough draft. You know, they needed to be tweaked, and I know the tweaking is still happening, but I think we're in a good spot with most of those schedulings. The new fourth grade section was created collaboratively, as I mentioned. An orientation regarding changes has been taken place this week for both cohorts. And that's an important thing to know, too, that we've had some trial runs of lunches and the kids have seen what it's going to be like, at least from a furniture perspective, being in their classrooms. And we've had the ability to have teachers have some conversations about that potential and what it might look like. And I just want to make it, make it clear that in this proposal, Wednesdays will be full days. Okay, so that's an important consideration. Didn't really have a place to put that in this presentation, but I thought it would fit best here in terms of preparation and scheduling. Now into the learning spaces. Most of our learning spaces are ready for full in-person return, almost all, and all spaces will be ready by March first, two thousand twenty-one. As I had mentioned in the original presentation, the classrooms are set at least three foot separation distance. And I want to just have Principal Farrell maybe go over what we're seeing here is I kind of go through the slides. So Principal Farrell, you can take it away. And it's, you know, not tremendous amount to narrate over, but maybe tell folks what we're taking a peek at here.
Okay, what you're taking a peek at right now is a first-grade classroom with the the numbers range from nineteen to twenty-one students, depending on the classroom. Classroom setup with the desks three, three feet apart. The blue and red mats that you see on the desk are what the students use if they're going to head outside, sit outside on the grass, or if they're going to go to a learning spot where they just, they're not completely sitting on the ground. So that's what those colored mats are there. You may see, if you'd have to look really closely, but the the teaching spots for the teachers to instruct are at most times, we're trying to get them six feet apart from the students. So you can see the straight ahead in the picture here you have. That might be a teaching area for one of the first grade teachers where she's doing words for reading, or she's using the calendar skills. That's a spot where she may be teaching, and the other spot would be up front where you obviously can't see from the picture. But just making sure the teacher has a clear distance from the students while she's trying to maneuver through the classroom to offer instruction. So that would be a first-grade classroom. Thank you. This, what you see down in this picture is a kindergarten classroom. Our kindergarten classrooms are not all the same shape and size. There are two of each out of the six classrooms. There are different sizes and shapes, but this is one classroom. You can see that the desks are three, three feet apart again. The mats that you see are the yoga mats that they sit on when they're maybe listening to a story or doing instruction. As we all know, kindergarten five-year-olds do not sit still for very long, so we try to offer them different opportunities to be standing at their desk, be sitting near their desk. The teachers have done a fabulous job with making campgrounds when we had half the class there, and we're going to continue making sure that the students know what their bubble spaces or their area is, but maintaining still that fun spirit that the kindergarten teachers have fostered. The, if you, the, yes, nope, that's fine. Thank you.
Want me to go on?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. The next picture you see is another kindergarten classroom that is set up, and again, seeing where their desk is, seeing where their their basket is, their campsite starts. I just wanted to mention that one of the pictures coming up, you'll see coats in the hallway. We are putting hooks, hooks in the hallway so students can put their coats and their boots while the weather is the way it is out in the hallway. It just eliminates having too much in the way of the students moving about the classroom, and we do not use our coat areas because there will be too, too many opportunities for students to be gathered in that area. What you see here is the art room. Again, looking at classrooms, our biggest classroom right now, we're trying to get our classroom size down to twenty-one. The tables that you see in the art room right now, there are twenty-one tables, and then we use the tables in the art room because obviously, when our project is happening, sometimes those tabletops, the desktops are a little too small. So we were able to use the furniture that we had in certain areas, pull them all together, and this is the art room. And Ms. Felicia Frank does a fabulous job working with the students, keeping them moving, keeping them motivated. So this is another specialist area where the children will be moving to, which will be nice to have movement. And this is the, probably looks like some people's home right now. There are things on the floor. But you will notice that where the wood part is, we're going to be putting our hooks up so that students can hang their items up. And those will line the kindergarten hallway, the first and second grade hallway. And those will be distanced three feet apart also. Thank you.
Nice, that's great. I thought, very resourceful of the Osgood staff to look at the spaces and think of walk the rooms today to to make sure, you know, they, it was really nice, the the resourceful nature of, you know, setting up the rooms. And this is a good example of it. So Principal Sullivan, I'll let you talk a bit about Deer Hill.
Hi, Superintendent Sullivan. So you'll see a lot of similarity between our layout and Osgood's. So this is an example of a third-grade classroom and how it's laid out. You can see in the bottom left corner, that's the teacher's standing desk. And so there's a nice amount of distance between that and the student desks that are about just over three feet apart.
And Principal Sullivan, what's the, kind of the classroom sort of numbers?
Numbers.
Range?
So, yes, so our smallest class has fifteen in it, and our largest class, we will have ultimately two classes with twenty students.
Okay, it's important to know.
This is just, we're just going to kind of go through different classrooms. Again, this is just a different view. You can see this classroom, I think the next picture is also from this room. So this angle, you can see the teachers kind of standing desk station at the front of the room. And then I think if you go to the net, yeah, exactly, right there. And then I think, oh, no, it flips to another picture, but we'll circle back to that classroom later. But this is another classroom where you see that standing desk, a computer kind of, we're, actually, this one has the standing desk off to the side, off to the right. And then like a teacher computer workstation off to the left. And so that's good. And a lot of our classroom spaces are set up to accommodate two teachers, because we do have our Curry College student teachers in twice a week. And so that was factored in as well to make sure that they had safe spaces from which to work as well. So this is that other classroom. You can kind of see the different angle where the teacher desk is in the back. So the the teacher's work, standing desk was in the front, her own personal desk is in the back. And I find that most teachers aren't spending really any time at their own personal desk unless they have their docu-camera, things like that there. They're really utilizing the standing desk spaces. And we have, I didn't have any pictures, but we don't have the the lovely campgrounds, which I think are fabulous. We feel are able to utilize our lockers and have our color coding system and things, so students will be dismissed to lockers at, you know, being able to maintain a minimum of three to six feet of distance. And so we're not quite as cozy, but we do have what we need. Just another example of a classroom.
Okay, thank you, Principal Sullivan. Now we'll get to some dining areas. And I mentioned that one school, Osgood, is really not shifting their dining areas, but they are shifting the amount of lunches they have. And Osgood, I mean, Deer Hill is the opposite. Deer Hill is actually keeping their same schedule, but they're changing their dining space. So you will be able to depict that in these pictures. I think it starts with Osgood. So go ahead, Principal Farrell. I know it's
So what you see here is the cafeteria. The tables are set up. Each table, you'll see taped down the middle of the table. That doesn't mean there are two students there. It's just, so the table, if you look at one of the white tables, the tape goes down the middle on the left-hand side. A student will be sitting there during the first lunch. We we clean the whole table, but when the second lunch comes through, we move that, we slide the chair over so the table has time to dry. And the child, the next group, the child is sitting on the right-hand side. So there are not, the table is not divided by tape for two children. It's one child. It's just divided for cleaning purposes. And the only thing I wanted to really mention about the cafeteria is the five tables up front. I believe I've mentioned this before. Those five tables are food allergy tables. The only time somebody sits there at any lunch is if they have a food allergy, and they've been assigned all tables children are assigned to, but the children are assigned to those tables, there's food allergies there. And I myself clean those five tables after every lunch with the different solution that's used from the other tables, so we know absolutely there are no food allergy allergens that are being used at that table, whether you're in kindergarten or second grade. What you see here is the gym. We have the same setup with one chair, and they slide the chairs for the groups that are coming in. The only difference we had to do in this room and in the cafeteria, we had to add a couple of desks in there just for the larger size. We, as Dr. Sullivan has said, we did add three more lunches and three more recesses. The gym, the The gym, the lovely dark brown top that you see hanging there on the other side of that, that is the gym space that Mr. Dykes is using while the weather is not cooperating enough for us to go outside. So the cafeteria, full cafeteria, half gym is what we use for our lunch and dining services.
Thank you, Principal Farrell. And now the, uh, the new
Recently, Kristen, the, the gymateria. Uh, so this was our former gym space that, um, we were very grateful to the middle and high school for loaning us sixty desks. Um, they're great because they're all one piece and they're heavy, so they don't, they don't move. We also have had a test run these last couple of days with this format. It's gone really well. Oh, there's an example of that. Similar to what Principal Farrell was saying, we have designated nut-free desks, and the only students who sit there, we do at our grade level or grade levels have students that do have nut allergies, but do not have accommodations to sit at those desks. And, and, you know, that's the personal kind of worked out with the nurse and everything, but our students that are identified do sit at the nut-free table, similar to Osgood. Um, it's cleaned with its own, own solution, its own, all its own materials, um, and is clearly labeled. And so the big change for us, our schedule is the same for lunch because we've split our lunch and our recess all year with six lunches and six recesses with half the grade level going out, half the grade level eating, and then swapping. The change is that, as you can see, we are no longer in the cafeteria. We're in the gymateria. And, uh, uh, Mr. Humans is now, again, uh, going outside when possible or appropriate for his lessons, and then has been, um, using the cafeteria for other PE activities. And also our yoga, our yoga program from the CEF has also moved to the cafeteria. So it has
I'm sorry, Alex, the cafeteria looked, I thought, looked great and totally serviceable for some lower impact activities, you know?
Yeah, he, uh, Mr. Humans already, it was funny, I was telling him that when I was in for the lunches, uh, it was quite the buzz in fifth grade. They were super excited about PE and what they were doing in there. And he really did, he was very purposeful in planning some team building activities and some things like that to, to get them excited about, you know, these changes.
Yeah, and I want to thank him also for his understanding and, you know, was able to meet with him today a little bit, just to say that. Because it's, uh, you know, obviously we're taking his gym, so.
Yeah, he's been incredibly gracious, gracious host.
Great. All right. So, um, some thoughts about transportation. Now, I just want to make sure I'll read this just so everyone's on the same page with it. But our bus routes are set for March 1st, 2021. And I thank everyone for your help with that. There are no changes to bus stops. That's an important factor. No changes to bus stops. Those families who answered the survey stating that they absolutely require transportation, and I want to clarify this because there was some back and forth. There were some families who said, you know, I would like it. And then they reconsidered and said, no, I don't need it. I'm not counting those families in here because we, you know, it was really tight on the, on the buses to be able to stick with the, the rules we were given. So those who absolutely require transportation every day have been afforded that transportation. If the vote goes through, communication will be forthcoming to those families tomorrow to let them know about that. Other than those identified families, it's important to remember, we'll be following the current cohort model of bus transportation. That means if you had a bus on, if you're a Cohort A student, you, and you require, and you are taking a bus, you would continue to be on Cohort A unless you're one of those identified families. And if you are a Cohort B student, you remain taking the bus on Cohort B. And then, of course, the opposite days for each cohort, you would be, uh, transporting your child to the school. Keep in mind that we are following the alternating Wednesdays for transportation in that that just tells you when those A kids will be taking the bus and when the B kids will be taking the bus. That's obviously in our district calendar. We ask families for patience as we ensure the timing of the buses. However, we believe that the ten-minute rule, in other words, being at the stop ten minutes before the scheduled time and waiting ten minutes after the scheduled time should suffice. So there were really minimal shifts in, in what we're doing with busing. And again, I want to thank everyone for that understanding. It was really essential to make this happen. Now, a lot of you probably know that right before break, they actually shifted some of the guidance for transportation. And what they've come up with are elementary schools, the capacity limitations and physical distancing requirements for students on buses have been lifted, which means that you can fit the kids you need to fit on the buses. I'll talk about what that, um, what that means in a minute. And what the, what the, uh, qualities have to be for that to happen. At the middle and high school, the capacity limitations and physical distancing requirements for students on buses are lifted, except for middle and high schools on districts with high community prevalence. So that means if we're in the red, we would have to be two students per bus. But actually, particularly with the high school kids, you really can't fit more than two in a seat anyway. So that wouldn't very much limit our ability to provide middle and high school busing when we're able to. And of course, for that to happen, there's certain things that, um, you know, you, you still have to follow. You have to keep distancing as they get on the bus and get off the bus. Mask must be one at all times. Windows must be open at all times during operation of at least two inches. In adverse weather conditions, every other window can be opened. And then we would be assigning seats for contact tracing and such. But, um, those are the, the conditions that have to be in place. But once we're able to, and I'm going to talk about in a second what that means, once we're able to provide full transportation, we will move to that. Now, what do we need, what needs to happen for us to be able to do that? Well, we know from our start schools later work that we require seven buses and drivers to transport students in town. And we really believe that we can make that happen with our current drivers. But the problem is, we have to pull from our Boston student drivers to do that, which means that we, we absolutely need to hire. And well, I should say, we need to solidify our Boston student transportation before we can open, open this up. We can do that in a couple of ways. We've already posted for the drivers. If, if we can hire them, we, we can, you know, uh, provide the buses. If not, we also have the option, because it's been hard to get drivers. We also have the option of, um, outsourcing and looking at a company who could provide the bus and the drivers. All of that is already posted in, in the preparation, in, in thoughts that this might get voted through. And of course, we need to do this anyway. But once all of these steps are accomplished, then it's like the start of school. We would, we would get, we would survey, set our routes based on the survey, interest K to twelve. We'd, uh, communicate the new routes and stops to the community, and then we'd implement the bus transportation. So it really, we have to have the proper drivers and buses. Remember, we, we decided this year, and it's something that I feel strongly we should try to keep, uh, having our own buses for our Boston students. It's important for a lot of reasons, but particularly in the pandemic, we didn't want to be sharing with towns for various, for obvious reasons. And we still don't want to be in that scenario. And, and I don't even think it's an option if we wanted it to be a scenario. So I just wanted everyone to know that. Drop off and pickup. And Principal Sullivan and Farrell, feel free to jump in at any time in this. But we are going to have to be mindful, particularly until we get more kids on the buses and are able to do that. We have to be very mindful of our drop off and pickup. The big word is going to be patience with this. We'll get it done. We need to keep it safe. Remember, the reward at the end of this is that your kids are going to be in school every day, full day. And that's a great thing for everybody. The drop off, our bus drop off will be at the usual time for both schools. The cars at Deer Hill, Cohort A will be at nine oh five AM, and Cohort B will be at nine fifteen AM. The cars at Osgood for drop off will be at nine ten AM, Cohort A. And for Cohort B, it'll be at nine twenty-five AM. The cohorts are the same pretty much for Deer Hill and Osgood. So it should align with, if you have, if you have kids at both schools, your drop off times should align, as should your pickup times. And the pickup times, bus pickup will be at the usual time for both schools, just as they are now, walkers and bikers. We're really talking about, um, Deer Hill will be dismissed after buses as usual. The cars at Deer Hill, Cohort A will be picked up at three fifteen PM, and Cohort B at three thirty. Cars at Osgood, Cohort A at three twenty, and Cohort B at three forty. Any thoughts or tidbits of information that you'd like to add to this? Um, Alex or Lisa? Go ahead, Alex.
I'd just like to add, because I did get this question, that for walkers and bikers in the morning, that our doors will still open at nine oh five, that the only place where we're staggering for cohorts is in terms of cars. So, uh, for walkers, bikers, bus riders, everything is business as usual.
Great. Anything, Principal Farrell?
Yeah, Dr. Sullivan, I just wanted to mention that after the meeting, uh, after the vote tonight and tomorrow, there'll be notification going out to the Osgood families. We're really going to have to, um, look at if you say your child's being a walker and they're being picked up as a walker, there, um, there'll be a schedule for that. Again, the same time, but location is really important. And if you're saying your child is car pickup, you're going to, um, be picking your child up by car. And we're going to have to cut down quite a bit on the parents that park, walk over to the walkers line and pick their children up. They're going to have to be very specific as to whether your child's a walker or a car pickup. But we will, we'll be sending all that out. I just want to reiterate how important it'll be to have people and the students, because there'll be a lot of activity going on, knowing exactly how they go home. So that'll be something that we'll be working on here at the Osgood.
That's great. And, you know, we're going to, obviously, safety's first. And then we, we need to be, just as we always have, careful of making sure they're separated as they move around as much as possible. And we're, the, the third thing is just to try to keep things moving. A bunch of those two other features are put in place.
Superintendent Sullivan, can I piggyback on the comment you just made about safety?
Please do.
Because I'm banging this drum everywhere I can. It's really important for Deer Hill walkers and bikers. Uh, I know that sometimes there's that feeling that, oh, not my child. But we continue to have a problem with our walkers, particularly the ones that head toward Osgood, um, fanning out across the road and not staying on the sidewalks. We had an incident where a student reached out and hit the side of a moving bus to entertain his friends or her friends, I'm not sure. Um, and so I just really, I want to bang that drum, that please reinforce with your students that they stay on the sidewalk. They can also walk across the field, um, between, uh, Deer Hill and Osgood that way. Uh, but that's really important, that bikes are, um, walked and that, you know, through that part, and that, um, that we're really being mindful of car traffic.
Yes. Thank you for saying that. Very important. Okay. Um, I didn't replace it with the model. I'm sorry, Alex. I meant to, um, this is, um, this is a placard that, I, I don't know where we are in this process to be completely transparent with you. So I'll let Alex and Lisa talk about this. Alex, I'm going to just tell where you are with this and what this is maybe. And then Lisa, you can explain where you are with it.
So a Deer Hill letter did go out to families, um, in anticipation of these going home. We've only had Cohort A students in the building this week, and so Cohort A students have received um, their placards, um, from their, their classroom. Each student received two placards. So if you are a family of four children in elementary school, you get eight placards. And um, if you, you know, just, it was just easier. We're, we're giving them out. But the idea is, and then Cohort B students will get their placards, um, this part of the week. Their placards are blue. Um, and the idea is, do you want me to walk through kind of the process?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So as you can see, our, our first step one is get the biggest, blackest Sharpie or marker you can find. And you're going to write your student's last name. If your last name as an adult is different, we really want the student's last name, big and bold on that top line. And then as large as you can, you can list your students' first names below, and then their teachers, who their teachers are, and then their grades. You will use the same placard for Deer Hill and Osgood. So it's okay to, you know, list Mrs. Steele and Mrs. Clark, if you have a first grader and a third grader, um, on the same placard. We ask that you put these placards in the front right, um, windshield, and that you have them, you know, prominently displayed for pickup and drop off. The idea with the color coding is that it, it again will stagger those start and end times. At arrival, it really is an honor system, um, you know, that, that you're coming in your allotted time window where really becomes critical. Um, and, and I know Principal Farrell can speak to what it means at Osgood, but at Deer Hill, if you are in Cohort B and you come before three thirty, um, your child won't be there because we'll be, we have a staging area in the gym, and we're dismissing Cohort A students to the gym. They're loading into their cars, and then, um, right before three thirty, we're dismissing Cohort B students. So I, I just want to unfortunately be very clear that if you have a blue placard or a Cohort B student, and you come through that line, we're going to ask you to circle the block and come back because we won't have a student to load into your car.
Great. Principal Farrell, maybe you could tell where you are with the process, and then anything you'd like to add?
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank, um, the Deer Hill staff and Mrs. Sullivan for making the placards. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We have placards now that we're using as we're going through, and I ask that the families, um, get rid of the, the name tags that we have right now and use these ones. Where we are in the process is I was waiting to make sure that, you know, things were voted on, and we went through this. As Mrs. Sullivan said, tomorrow, um, brings in our Cohort B students, they will be going home with their Cohort B placards, the blue. And Cohort A, we're going to send you, um, at least for the Monday, we're going to send you a, um, the Cohort A symbol so that you can print it out at home, and it'll be on white. And then we'll give you the yellow when you, you come in on Monday. Same thing is, please, as, um, Mrs. Sullivan was saying, please make sure that you're, you're utilizing the time window that was given to you. As anybody that comes up to the Osgood to pick up their children, know it takes quite a while to have the students lined up and get into the cars. Just the smaller size makes, of the students makes it a little difficult. So we want to make sure we keep everything going. And if somebody comes in during a time that they're not scheduled to come in, it kind of slows down the process. So just maintaining, um, following the directive as far as if you're Cohort A or Cohort B. And as Dr. Sullivan said, there'll be many more communications coming home over the next few days in a staggered response. So when we talk about communication, we then talk about pickup, um, and drop off, just so everyone has the same bit of information, but it's not too overwhelming.
Super. Thank you. So obviously, I mentioned this earlier, but we're in the process of ordering mobile plexiglass shields for classrooms to be used when needed by teachers, when they are conferring with a student within three feet of distancing. Also, as I had mentioned, yes.
Just to clarify, those plexiglass shields, they're not on every desk. These are just, there's a few of these things that are portable for use in, in certain circumstances, correct?
That is correct. It's, it's for use during those times when a teacher might be very close to a student, particularly at the elementaries when, uh, you know, they have to work so closely to help a kid with an assignment or what it might be, which is the extra, extra PPE, extra barrier between them. And it will not be something we're separating students to student. Uh, and then I had mentioned this about the Cambridge Innovation Center Health. We are moving forward with this to provide, uh, testing for our staff, staff who are interested, weekly testing. And, um, if, you know, if, if indeed the committee decides this is something we want to do. And again, they securely report the results, and they complete all the contact tracing. It, we already have the training happening with our nurses, and we're hopeful to get this up and running. Uh, if not early next week, maybe later next week. But we'll, we'll have it up and running, um, very soon if the committee, so cease fit, vote this through. And then finally, uh, as, as Principal Farrell mentioned, there'll be a lot of communications forthcoming if the committee votes this through. And, uh, we're just really excited to make this a reality. I, I can't thank the school committee, the, the leadership, that obviously you've seen the, the labors that Principal Farrell and Principal Sullivan have put in, the staff, um, amazing work, and all the families and students for their collaboration. So this is really a team effort. And if the committee does not vote it through, well, then we hope we can do it soon. Because it's, it's great for the kids. So, uh, that's really it. Chair McClellan, I'll, I'll leave it to you for any discussion or questions.
Um, excuse me, is it okay if I just pipe in for a second?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Principal Sullivan and Farrell, of course. If there's anything more you want to say, go ahead.
Um, so I just really quickly, I'd like to express my sincere appreciation to all the staff that have gone above and beyond to continue to prepare for the welcoming of our students on the first. Um, and when I say all staff, it, it is every staff member that comes into this building has given a hundred and ten percent for the preparation of having the Osgood students come back. So I do sincerely appreciate everyone's support in the staff in doing this. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
I can just say ditto.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's good to, good to hear that, though. Good to say it. So thank you for doing that. Okay, so if there's nothing else, then principals, I will, or, um, Doc Schollins, or Sue, or anybody else, I'll turn it over to the committee. uh, Sue or anybody else, I'll, I'll turn it over to the committee for a discussion.
Okay, uh, as I normally do in these sort of impactful topics, I'll just, um, take a consensus vote of the committee because it's not necessarily the standard operating procedure to turn to the, uh, community voices first. But I always think it's valuable to do that, uh, before we engage in deliberation. So just take a quick consensus sort of roll call, um, to, uh, to move to, um, community voices first before we deliberate. Uh, and, and I vote would be in favor of going to, uh, to the question and answer feature before we deliberate. So, Mrs. Cleary?
Uh, don't I need to make a motion to do that or?
Excuse me? Just for a consensus vote. If you want, if we want to do a motion, that's fine. Is there a motion?
Motion to move to committee input before, I'm sorry, community input before committee deliberation.
There are second.
Second.
Second of my Mr. Kearney. Great. Uh, so Mrs. Cleary.
Hi.
Um, Mr. Kearney.
Hi.
Mrs. Mark.
Hi.
St. Orange.
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan. Okay, so we'll do that. Um, first, uh, Megan Driscoll of one forty-one Linden Drive, uh, comments. I have a daughter in kindergarten. Throughout the past year and all the challenges we, we as a community, a country, a world have faced, people seem to be looking for silver linings. I think one of the most important silver linings is a greater respect, understanding and admiration for what you all do. I wanted to thank Superintendent Sullivan, the principals, the board and the teachers for all your hard work, your adaptability and your time. The past year isn't how any of us wanted these kids to learn. I know I am not a good kindergarten teacher. These kids need you, the professionals, full time. Thank you for doing the work and making the sacrifices necessary to get this done. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mrs. Driscoll.
Thank you.
Abigail Sullivan of eighty-seven Pleasant Street. Thank you, teachers, principals and school administrators for your work getting the schools ready for a full return for K through five. We support this idea and hope that it happens. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Um, Erin Ryan of Hemlock Way. I just want to show my support for the elementary students returning full time starting next week. Our kids have been struggling academically and socially and emotionally for over a year now. I appreciate everything the teachers and staff have done so far in making this possible from communication with Osgood teachers and staff this past week. It seems that they are fully ready to accept students back full time next week. And for this, I am very appreciative. Thank you. Thank you. Sarah McSweeney, fourteen Summer Street. I would like to comment on the very comprehensive plan for the return of full-time learning for Deer Hill and Osgood. Clearly a tremendous amount of planning and logistical work by the teams. Thank you, school administration, school committee, teachers and staff for working hard for our student community. Very much looking forward to continuing the progress for middle high and I'm very optimistic about your progress update at the March meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, Matt Bolu, I hope I'm pronouncing that correct. Uh, thank, uh, he lives at twenty Cedar Acres Lane. Thank you so much for all the consideration on this. The staff and committee have done a fantastic job with this. We fully support, support this plan and can't wait for the kids to be back full time. Matthew and Elizabeth, uh, Bolu. And again, if I'm butchering your name, I apologize. Um, Meredith Carlson of twenty Ledgewood Farm Drive. Thank you for all the extremely careful planning. It's great to see all the hard work you put into making this a possibility for our kids.
Thank you.
Um, Emma Bromhead of two eighty Fair Oaks Lane. Thank you for the school committee. Thank you to the school committee administration and entire CPS community for their collaboration and thoughtful consideration of the full-time reentry plan for the elementary schools. The preparation efforts are amazing. We strongly support the reentry plan for March first and very much appreciate that it appropriately addresses and balances the needs of our children and potential risks associated with full-time in-person learning. Thank you, Sister Bromhead. Don Newell. Um, no address noted. Um, do the recent CDC guidelines have any impact on the proposal being discussed now? Also, where does coacid fall in the color-coded system the CDC created?
Yeah, um, I can, I can mention that. So, uh, the CD guy, CDC guidelines always impacts everything we do. Uh, again, the state has a set of rules that we're following. Uh, but we have looked at the CDC guidelines and part of the CDC guidelines are the color-coded system. And we'll say it's a little bit different because the system is based on one week and we've been tracking things for two weeks. So we'd have to look at what our rates are for one week to see where we fall, uh, within the coded system. As you have seen from my reports, our numbers are going down. We are still in the red in, in the Massachusetts system. Um, but I would have to look at it week to week to see where we are in their color-coded, which is something, you know, we, we can certainly look at, but, um, right now, uh, I don't know where we'd fall within that because of that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Um, Christopher Allen of Pleasant Street. I would like to commend Patrick Sullivan, I imagine, and his staff, as well as Craig McClellan and the entire school committee for their actions this evening. There is no substitute for in-person learning. Students in all grades are feeling the negative effects of the lack of instruction and socialization. A unanimous vote tonight is a clear acknowledgement that the needs of the student comes first. We look forward to a similar action at the high school.
Thank you.
Um, Mrs. Angelie Stevenson of thirty-six Rustic Drive. Thank you for all your hard work. Um, Ms. Jennifer Dial, twenty-one Rocky Lane. Thank you to the entire CPS community for all your hard work and planning to get our children back to school full time. Uh, Caroline, Caroline Norgoe, I think I'm pronouncing that correct, maybe not. N O R G E O T of ten Sankey Road. Thank you for putting this plan together for the elementary schools. I am in full support of this plan and look forward to hearing the plans for the CMS and CHS. Thanks for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah and Adam Norman, eighty-eight Doane Street. Thank you very much. My children are so excited to return to school and see the rest of their classroom. And as a family of two working parents, we both deeply appreciate all of your efforts to make this happen.
Thank you.
Caitlin and John Marcus Pennard, eighty-five Air Fair Oaks Lane. Thank you for working so hard to get our kids back full time. We fully support this as it promotes both their academic and emotional health. Mrs. Molly Pfeiffer of fifty-nine Ochs pasture lane. I'm a parent of four children, three of whom have been struggling for almost a year with remote learning. I am fully in support of a return to full-time in-person learning. Thank you to the school administration and the school committee for the time and effort you have put forth to make this a reality for our children.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Abby Maderos of thirty-seven Riverview Drive. I want to voice my support for full-time in-person learning for elementary students. I appreciate all the time, thought and consideration that has gone into this plan. Dr. Sullivan, the teachers and staff have done an incredible job this past year in these uncertain times. We thank you from the bottoms of our heart.
Thank you. They certainly have. Thank you.
Megan Berry of eleven Tad Lane. As a parent of an Osgood student, a Deer Hill student, I agree with moving forward for in-person elementary school. I know many parents and students are looking forward to a brand new start for everyone starting March first. Thank you, teachers, administrators and all members of the CPS elementary schools.
Thank you.
Kristen Quinn, two hundred nineteen Sawyer Street. My daughter is one of the children having to move classes. Although she is sad to leave the comfort of her classroom, we both agree that this is one hundred percent better than sitting in her room all day on a computer. We want to very much thank the administration, school committee for their careful planning and being advocates for our children.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Frazier. I'm sorry, Dr. Sullivan, what'd you say?
Oh, I was just saying, thanks for your understanding. Thank you.
Elizabeth Frazier, excuse me, Brian and Beth Frazier of twenty-seven Wendy Hill Road. We are grateful for the work of the school committee, superintendent, principals, teachers and staff, and look forward to sending our boys back to school after a long year of struggle. And finally, uh, Mrs. Lauren Chisholm of sixty-four Linden Drive. I'm going to echo all of the prior statements thanking the school committee, principals of Deer Hill and Osgood and Dr. Sullivan for their work in preparing to bring our students back full time. This movement is in accordance with recommendations from the CDC, keeping in mind the social, emotional and academic needs of our young students and appears to be planned out with everyone's safety in mind. Thank you.
It is. Thank you.
One more that came in, uh, Kristen Dean of twenty-three Summer Street. Thank you deeply for all your efforts to get our kids back in the classroom. It is clear how much teamwork and tireless effort has gone into this and we are so grateful. I am fully in support of return to full-time in-person learning. Um, thank you, everyone, for that overwhelming support. That was, uh, amazingly kind and so refreshing to see, uh, the, uh, the district leadership, um, thanked, um, so wholeheartedly. Thank you so much for that.
And the staff, and the staff too, because they deserve a lot.
The entire CPS community, I guess we should say.
Yes.
So, uh, thank you so much. Uh, I think they all need it. It's been a tough year. Um, so, uh, moving on to the school committee, uh, deliberations will move, uh, in alphabetical order as, as usual. Uh, Mrs. Cleary, do you have any comments?
Uh, I don't. I feel like I, um, it's good to hear that the parents are in support of the decision. It's good to hear that people are, um, recognizing how much work went into this because I would also like to thank again, um, all of our leadership for, and, and our staff for collaborating in such a way that is allowing us to do this thoughtfully. Um, I, I don't have any questions though. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleary. Mr. Kearney?
Hi. Um, yes, I too want to thank the staff, the administration. Um, it just was, uh, I'm so excited. Like this just, we, we talked about this in January and here it is about to happen. And it, it's something that the whole community pitched in together. It was just a really joyous thing to see. Um, and as we all should know, when things start to open up, uh, some of the, uh, protocols that we've put in place during this, uh, the, the fall, such as, you know, the outdoor classrooms that we have. I'm sure we can be implementing those as the weather gets better too. So, um, those are the, those are the things I just want to recognize that, um, not only did we do this, um, uh, so well, Dr. Sullivan, your staff, your teachers, the kids, um, everybody just did it as a community and I'm so grateful to be part of it. And, um, I'm just hopeful that we can, uh, get it going and, and, and it's not going to be perfect. Uh, we're still going to have, um, some things that we need to iron out and, um, I'm sure that your staff and the community will, will, will all be there for that. And, uh, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, can I just say one thing? Well, I apologize. Um, I just feel compelled to say, while there's so many people here that are so enthusiastic about this change, the, um, the ability for us to maintain this very important and fragile learning model uh, is, is completely reliant on our behavior. And I just felt compelled to circle back really quickly to just reiterate the fact that, um, this is a very precarious situation and we all want this to happen and we all want this to work. And in order for it to work, it seems like it might be a good idea for us to be even more careful than we've even been so that we can ensure the safety of our students and our staff and the success of this model. Thanks.
Thank you for saying that.
Very, very sage advice, Mrs. Cleary. Thank you. Mr. Kearney, are you finished?
Uh, yes. Thank you.
Mrs. Mark.
Um, thank you. Uh, hard, hard to find unique comments. My colleagues have been so eloquent. Um, I am pleased to hear the principals thank their staff and to hear the collaboration um, in getting the individual buildings set up. I'm thrilled that Dr. Sullivan, uh, being an educator, not only looked at what's best for the children, but logistically how to get it done. Logistics is a very difficult, uh, detail-driven, uh, scenario-based, um, field of study. I, I, I'm in it. And if A happens, then B can happen. But if A doesn't happen, then B, you have to have backup plans and contingencies. And I think he's done, he and his staff have done a terrific job at looking at the logistics of getting all the kids back in safely while maintaining their safety, but also understanding the toll this has taken on our youngest learners socially, academically and emotionally. So I'm thrilled for the community support. I echo Chairman McClellan. It's so gratifying. I hope it's gratifying to Dr. Sullivan and, and his staff who are here to, to see this, to, to hear the comments, to feel the support. Um, it's, it's very much appreciated. So thank you to the community members who spoke up and, um, all of those who are out there nodding their heads in agreement. Um, and so I, I just want to say, well done, Dr. Sullivan, to you and your team. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just add, um, a big thank you to Sue Owen, our director of finance and operations. She's the one working really closely with our, with, with the operations. So she's doing a lot of work behind the scenes with our bus drivers, our food service, our custodians and of course, uh, supporting our principals. So thank you, uh, Sue, for your work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Um, Mrs. St. Orange.
Thank you. Um, it is so heartening to hear the support of the community and I really appreciate people showing up to share positive comments. It's really a nice, um, thing that we don't always think to do. And I think sometimes it's so easy to, uh, you know, pay close attention and become fired up, but I really like that. It's just really nice to have people fired up in a positive direction tonight. Um, all one hundred and sixty-nine of you at this point, I think we're up to one seventy-two at one point. So we're like rock stars tonight. Um, I am really excited about this possibility. Um, I'm also feeling very confident after, um, you know, hearing Dr. Sullivan's plan, also being on the Deer Hill Council, hearing Principal Sullivan talk about the logistics at the school level. And I just, I want to acknowledge, you know, how much, um, I appreciate hearing how much input the teachers have had in a part of this, you know, knowing that they have been in the classrooms with kids all day, every day, both cohorts. There's so much to offer and I know that they are giving two hundred percent of themselves all the time. And so many specialist teachers are stretching even farther to go for recess coverage or lunch coverage. And, and we truly appreciate every second of that time that you are all giving and our kids appreciate it. Um, I also love the shift towards more outside time. I think something that we can be doing in the future, even in post-COVID times, is getting outside more, um, as a part of our school day. And I hope that, that we can keep that, um, even perhaps closer than three feet at some time in the future. Um, the messaging that's been coming home from classroom teachers has been wonderful. Before I even said anything to my kids about going back to school, their teachers had already talked to them about it and were pumping them up and making them feel safe and comfortable with yet another transition this year. So I just think that, that kind of grassroots campaign from teachers to kids is, those are really trusted adults in their lives. It's so nice to hear that message coming from them. Um, I have a couple of, uh, one quick question. And this, I don't know if this sounds crazy or not, but just from the Plexiglas that showed up in my classroom at the beginning of the year, um, I think a lot of that is designed to have like a little pass-through slot through which one might buy a ticket or something. Um, and then we had to rebuy ones without the slot because that's kind of where a child's mouth and breath would be. So just making sure where, I'm sure you know that already. I just have to say it because that's what showed up in my room. And I thought, that's like the worst spot for a pass-through during COVID. Um,
Yeah. We're, we're working, uh, that's really good point. We're working with our emergency management director, Glenn Pratt, uh, for the town. Again, town, town input is really one town helping the kids. And he, he'll be working very closely with the principals and their staffs to pick the right model. And then we're gonna make sure that, you know, tho- those Plexies are the ones we get. We want to make sure we get it right. So.
And I can, I mean, um, I heard from Glenn this evening and he said he's got the samples down in the EOC and to pop by to look at them. So I think that was definitely on our radar. I remember that pass-through came up in a conversation. So, um, I'll be taking a peek, um, tomorrow and, and Lisa, you're welcome, of course, to pop over if you want to as well, or I can take pictures.
Great.
Yeah, that's great to hear. I think that's one of those logistics that a year ago, we never would have thought like, wow, what kind of Plexiglas do I want? Um, but it's a very important decision now. Um, also just to clarify, and obviously you guys have all discussed this and I'm sure your endless hours of meetings. But so with the full day Wednesday, teachers will all be back to regular prep time. So they all get their prep and planning in the way that it used to happen. Is that correct? Awesome.
Yeah, if, uh, I don't know, Lisa or Alex, if you want to mention anything about the schedules in particular, but the answer to that is yes, for sure.
Great. Um, just, you know, a huge thank you to everyone here and to everyone watching and to everyone who's been teaching at home and teaching in school. We have worked really hard. And, um, I echo what Mrs. Cleary said. I think that we need to be so mindful on the days that we are driving our children because they don't have a bus, have masks on in the car. Let's not be risk takers. Let's keep this really safe and healthy so our kids can stay in school altogether every day. So thank you, everyone.
Uh, Superintendent Sullivan, can I add something based on something Mrs. St. Orange said?
Absolutely.
When you were talking about schedules and things, it, this kind of popped in my mind too as we're thinking about what this transition will look like. I think it's important to note that, you know, we really are framing this as a, as a start to the school year. And so with that comes a go slow to go fast mentality. And so I think this is a good opportunity to talk about, you know, that teachers are going to be building, you know, every teacher really has a new classroom community that they're going to be building as they bring the cohorts together, or in one case, start a new classroom community. And so, you know, from the parent perspective, that means, you know, things, you know, some of the routines and things like homework and things like that aren't, aren't going to hit the, the ground March first. So thank you, you know, to borrow a phrase we use in our building, forgiving. aren't, aren't going to hit the, the ground March 1st. So thank you, you know, to borrow a phrase we use in our building, for giving us grace and space to establish those communities, to build that foundation of SEL and to then kind of build back up to that academic rigor. Because I think if we, you know, we need that strong foundation to really accelerate our learning, the second part of the year.
Well said, Alex. And I'm sure Lisa echoes that. If you want to say anything, Lisa, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to, I've been tossing out with the staff and I, several times, it's going to take us two weeks to really get ourselves so that we, we see where the glitches might be and we fix them. So I do, I echo what Alex was saying. Sorry, Mrs. Sullivan was saying, as far as, give us time, pretend this is in September where your child's coming in, they're learning the new routines and whatnot. It, it just, it's going to take time for everybody just to settle into what's happening. Patience is what we really need. And while we have patience, be excited for the children. This really is an exciting time for them to all come back. So I echo exactly what Mrs. Sullivan was saying.
And just the normalcy and the routine is so important for these kids. And I know I'm preaching to the choir when I say that. Thank you.
Okay, before we move on, Dr. Sullivan, there's one more question that came, it was a question that came in while we were all speaking. Just want to ask it. Irene Nesteridi asks, well, she states, hello, thank you so much for all your efforts. I was wondering if the before-school and after-school will be open to both Cohort A and B now every day?
I'll let Dr. Scollins answer that one, if you don't mind, Dr. Scollins.
The answer is yes. So as soon as the decision is made tonight, if the answer is yes, we're going to move forward, then Ted Carroll, who is the Director of the Recreation Department, will be sending information out to families. And yes, we will have before and after, so it will not be cohort-driven. You will be able to do that. And his plug for me today on the phone was, if you want to avoid lines in the morning and in afternoon, you can put your children in RISE and therefore you will not have to get in those lines. So, yes, so you'll be seeing that information. And it will be out in the navigator. And I know that Principal Sullivan and Principal Farrell will put in their newsletters also with the links for families if they would like to participate in RISE.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'd just state that I think it's probably abundantly apparent to everyone that's been listening that if it weren't for the efforts of everyone on the screen, most, most particularly the, the elementary school building principals and our leadership staff, Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Scollins, Mrs. Owen, but also Barbara Saronka, who's our Director of Student Services, who is not here. If it was not for these people's efforts, everyone needs to know, we would not be in a position to be taking this vote right now. It is because of them that this is happening. So I want to make that abundantly clear, if it wasn't already. And with that said, I'm immensely confident that no one wants to listen to me say anything other than to ask whether there's a motion on the floor to accept Dr. Sullivan's plan to return our elementary students to school full-time as of March 1, 2021. Is there a motion to that effect on the floor?
No, moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Marr. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Collier. All in favor, roll call. Mrs. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mrs. Marr.
Aye.
Mrs. Sanong.
Aye.
Aye. Craig McClellan, Dr. Sullivan, that motion unanimously passes. We would respectfully request that you implement your plan to return all of our elementary students back to the buildings full-time, five days a week, commencing on March 1, 2021.
Well, thank you very much. And Chairman McClellan, thank you to the whole committee. And, you know, I would say this regardless if you've put it on it or not, but your, your support and guidance is really valuable for this community, the school community, and particularly for me. So thank you very much. The community should understand how much you put forth and how hard these decisions are. And you're truly great ambassadors for them. So thank you for that. And very excited, and mostly excited for the kids. Because I, I know full well, being a father, the impact that this is going to have in a positive way on our, on our students. So, so thank you for, for allowing it.
It's very, very encouraging. It's a, it's a great moment and we should enjoy it, but not rest on our laurels because we got half of our district still in hybrid. So we'll turn to see what we can do for them as well in the very near future. They need it just as much.
Very true.
Thank you all. Thank you so much. Dr. Sullivan, does that include, conclude, excuse me, the superintendent's report for this evening?
It certainly does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the finance report. Mrs. Owen, do you have any, do you have a monthly update for us?
Yes, I do.
Would you like me to make your co-host, co-host Sue, or should I share it?
Either one is fine.
Which, which document would you like?
The monthly update.
Okay.
Please.
You got it. Okay, there you are.
There we are. So this is just a monthly update for the the time period from July 1st to January 31st. So it's really, you know, the difference between what happened in December to January. It gives you the cost centers and what their totals are throughout the year, past few years, where it's about 60% through the school year. And our budget shows that it's about 52.32. So we're, we're on task, we're not over budget. Some of the, some of the cost center areas are, but they're fluid. So between now and the end of the year, those may change. You know, the key things are the special tuition is always what we watch and utilities, which don't really seem to be a problem. Special ed is, is key, but it may balance out by the end of the year. The, the next page is just the summary budget to actual. And it gives you, you know, again, a different breakdown by cost centers and where we are in the, in the percentage-wise throughout the year. Again, you can see some areas where below average and percentile and other areas where over, again, it will balance out hopefully. So you can keep scrolling. This just gives you the whole summary of it. That the next, the next spreadsheet is the actual detailed expenditures, which isn't here. But I can bring that up. So this is the grants revolving. I try to keep this, you know, up to date monthly to give you an idea of where we are. It, it shows you all the grants that we have. We actually have a couple more on their way. We have the ESSCR 2 coming, which I think we're, we're probably going to apply for to utilize those funds July 1, because right now we're standing okay with our funding. And then there's another.
Could you just describe what, what the ESSR is quickly?
So I don't, I can't think off the top of my head what it actually stands for, but it's, it's the, the fund, the funding from the state to help through the reopening of schools and for COVID protections and PPEs.
Thank you.
So the state has definitely been, been helping us. There, I think we have another 185,000 coming July 1. So that would definitely be a help for next year. But this just gives you the list of our grants and where we are, you know, with the balances, the opening balances are, what we've spent to date, what's been encumbered, and then what the fund balances are. And the second page is the revolving, which again, this is where we bring fees in. It gives you what our opening balances were, what we've brought in to date for revenue, what our expenses have been, what our encumbrances are, and what the fund balances are. You will see, you know, there's, there's one, I believe, that's in slight deficit, which is the after-school, the RISE, I think. That's just a matter of collecting fees versus, you know, revenue versus expenses. So if, overall, if you look, we have a grand total between granting and revolving of another additional $1.6 million added to our regular school budget that helps fund our programs and our supplies, materials, and staffing. This is an update of just remaining balances on capital. So we can kind of see what, what our project, where our projects stand, what's been carried forward, what's been expended, what's left over. Most, most of them have been expended. I know they're working on, they split the AC and bandroom. I've talked to facilities about that. That's, that's not on their top priority. The pair of the court-like doors, finally, the order's been placed. We're just waiting. As you can see, this, there's a $20,000 line item under encumbrances, which means there's a purchase order out there. So we have.
Believe it. I cannot believe it.
It's happening. It's happening.
Anything. Cats are going to start chasing dogs. It's going to be raining when it's sunny out. I can't believe it. Amazing. Thank you for that.
The next is the, the bus maintenance. I know Ellen had mentioned that we haven't seen one for a while. So I reached out to Supervisor of Transportation and she updated me. So this gives you just the past few years summary. I believe down below is the actual maintenance log for the whole school year, going back to July, that you can go through. I mean, it just, it lists every expense, whether it's parts, labor. Quite a few pages. We haven't really had, there's not a lot in there, if you look. A lot of it's just maintenance, no cost.
I think we should go through each of these individually. I'm just.
No. No. Enrollment. So I put this together. I know this is not what you typically see. It was also good for me to see the enrollment on, you know, how many, how many teachers we have in each, each level, how many sections? And then how many, how many students in each section? And it gives you the totals of, you know, how many are in each grade and how many total per school. And then you get into the secondary. I split it out as well, elementary and secondary with the TECA. So we could see how many students were attending the TECA. And then at the bottom, it gives you the total enrollment. This is a snapshot of now. So this 1,409, and then it gives you a snapshot of what preschool looks like. Is there more? Is there anything below this?
I think that's it for this document.
That's it. Okay. So that's it for this document. I don't know if there's any questions on the monthly update? Because I know we're going to talk a little bit about budget.
I'm going to go around, Mrs. Collier, do you have any questions? Okay, Mr. Kearney, any questions?
I'll save them.
Okay, Mrs. Marr, I saw you had a question. I was just trying to go around the regular order there.
Sure. Sorry. No, no problem. Mrs. Owens, at 52.3, do you happen to have last year? I just don't have it with me. 52.3% expended.
Where we were last year at this time?
Yeah.
I don't have it open, but I can definitely, I can definitely, I can definitely pull it.
You can, okay. I was just curious. On the, on the bus maintenance, off the top of your head, was any particular bus? Like, have we had a problem with any particular bus? So everything was pretty standard across the whole fleet?
Yes, yes. The buses are still in very good condition. And, and and our Supervisor of Transportation even said, we haven't, we haven't really had to do a whole lot of maintenance to them, just, you know, preventative stuff. But we haven't really had, and of course, I jinxed myself because we just had slight damage to one bus a few weeks ago. But up, up until then, they've all been running knock-on wood smooth. No, you know, we haven't had to hit, to get this, we haven't had to use the spare. So things are, things are going well. But I think it also has to do with the age of the buses as well.
Yeah, they're relatively new. The, are all the, the kindergarten tuitions in for the year?
Are they all in? They're still, they're still collecting.
Okay. And on the capital budget list, you know, with anything that's left over before capital takes it away, like there's still some money, I think, from, from sidewalks and concrete and things. We should make sure that we tell them we want it to roll it into our next appropriation.
Okay.
Otherwise, they, they take it back. As long as it's the exact same thing, you know, for sidewalks and concrete. Like you couldn't roll it into painting, but you can roll it into a similar project. So we should look at any balances and see if there's like or similar projects to roll that money into.
Okay.
That's it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. That's it for me.
Now, is that something we should mention on the first, or should we wait?
No, we could, well, if we talk about, you know, the sidewalk paving, that project, we can say there's residual money left over that should roll into that project. And anything that's not related to the items on Monday night, we should just take offline and let them know.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Marr. Mr. Kearney, were you just raising your hand?
Yeah, I just, I want to circle back to, Susan, did we already have the money allocated for the split air conditioning in the Deer Hill? Because that, so why aren't we doing that?
I'm, I'm not sure what, what's been the delay. I know it's not at the top of the list. And I know it was timing the time of the year. He wanted to do it in the spring and I don't know what.
That makes sense that it's in the spring. I would appreciate that. However, I just want, it, it should be on one of the top of the lists. Because, you know, we all know that room gets up to almost 90 degrees. So that's, that's not acceptable for children to be in a room that hot. So I thought we had it apparent that we're going to get that done. But I'm, I'm definitely hopeful and grateful that we'll get that done by the end of April. So maybe we can get that done during April vacation. But I definitely want to put, make sure that that's on the priority list. Because it's, it's really important, especially today. I mean, I know there might be, you know, more money for air conditions and filtration systems and all that coming up with the, with the CARES Act, hopefully. However, I, I thought we did put away some money to get the AC put into those split rooms. Did. We did. So if the money's there, we should put that on as a priority. You know, I, I, you know, I hope I speak for all the members on that, that, you know, it's important that kids have a very good temperature in their classroom. I should say, I completely agree, Mr. Kearney, but I'll also, you know, near and dear to, to something you're, you have been advocating for so, so adamantly and successfully. Our hydration stations are all in, which is a wonderful thing to see. So that's nice. Yes. Oh, absolutely. And every one in the school, is that correct? Susan, Mrs. Owen, I was happy to see that. Everyone in the school now, in every building, has a hydration station. Is that correct?
Yes.
All the bubblers have been replaced.
All the bubblers have been replaced.
That's awesome. Yeah. So there is progress. I just want to make sure that that's on the, that's definitely a priority. And I'm, I'm, again, I want to hear from other school committee members that I'd like to see if I have my, your support on that. Because, you know, that's something that we did advocate for, for a long time. And I just don't want to see it dissipate.
Right. No, I totally, I totally agree, Paul. I'm an advocate of, if we ask for it, then we should be utilizing it and expending it during that year we've asked for. I mean, unless something extenuating comes up, we, we shouldn't need to carry it into a following year. I mean, if we said we needed it for this year, then we need it for this year. We've been given the funding based on that, we should be doing, we should be doing the work. But I do know, when I talked to facilities, that it is on their list. And he was hoping to have it done by spring.
Okay.
Or in the spring.
Makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. And Mr. Kearney, great job pushing those hydration stations. I mean, I'm sure you're happy. In fact, I think that the kids actually say, I'm going to go fill my water bottle up at the Paul Kearney. Because they, they just called them, they referred to them as Paul Kearneys instead of hydration stations now.
The water boy. Thanks.
Hey, it's an important thing.
Hydration is very important.
Sure is. Mrs. Sanong, do you have any questions for Mrs. Owen?
I don't have any questions from Mrs. Owen. I would like to echo though, what Mr. Kearney's saying and asking for feedback from the committee. Having AC, especially in a time when we are feeling warmer temperatures and a school year in which we are going until June 23rd, I would say, man, we're going to need that. So, so give them a little push.
Thank you.
Definitely on top of it.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Sanong. I have no questions. Mrs. Owen, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Does that conclude your report, Mrs. Owen?
That concludes the monthly report. And we can move on to the FY22 budget update.
Thank you.
So I just, I put together a small, short presentation. Some of it repetitive. So we've got our budget, FY22 budget priorities, which you've seen. We did meet as a finance, sub-finance committee last week and talked about the budget and where we were at. So here is the, here is the requested school budget. Our current budget is 20,960. It shows you what our contractual. Where did that go? Where did that go? Did Pat leave?
The quickest resignation of a superintendent.
Pat is gone.
Yeah, he's gone, um.
All right, hold on.
He'll, he'll join back in. Are you, Doc's gone.
Susan, Susan's the host now, so she can share.
Well, that's what, I just got this big thing on my screen that I'm now the host, so I was like, what happened to, where did Pat go?
Well, he'll probably come back.
He'll get back on.
Yeah, you'll have to let him in, Susan.
Yeah. Do you see him?
No.
You can make me, make me a co-host. Go up on the top, and then I'll watch for him, and you can. Okay?
Participants plus co-host.
Okay, just go up and make me a co-host.
I am not seeing it.
On me, look on, look on me, go up onto my top right. Dr. Sullivan's calling me right now.
Where are you? There you are. Sorry.
It's no problem. Take your time. We just want to make sure we, we get him back.
There you go.
She's, I know, I was like, wow, where did he go? Okay, so.
Doc's gone, you're now a co-host.
So the, these are the contractual obligations, um, and I gave you the percentages of budget. We talked about, we had a decrease in circuit breaker funding, decreasing um tuitions, as well as a de- decrease in the reimbursement rate. So, and then we had a small decrease in special intuitions, only about eight thousand dollars, which is tremendous. Um, it's great. Project retirement savings are about a hundred and forty thousand. Staffing and other requests were an additional two hundred and twenty thousand, and then an array of reductions, which I'll show you detail in a minute, of two hundred and forty-four thousand, two, two hundred and forty-five thousand, which gives us a total requested budget of twenty-one million five hundred and seventy-nine thousand one seventy-nine. It's a two point nine five percent increase over, um, about six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That is the number that we've been given from the town at this point. Um, and we actually met as an administrative team several times, had discussions, and we did um make it back, make it back to that number, so that was a good thing. This kind of shows you the makeup of those numbers, so um the increases were the increase of a point five social studies teacher at the high school, the add of a point five middle school reading specialist, the one point, one point O add of computer science technology specialist for the middle and high school, and then the add of a grade seven sped teacher based on the bubble that, um, Ms. Swak was talking about. And then, um, in order to get, in, in order to get to the number that the town was allotting us, originally, we had beginning the process of reduc- reducing the full day kindergarten. There was a fifty thousand dollar um number there. In order to um be able to keep all staff and not reduce any staff, we, we went looking at supplies, materials, and we agreed that we could drop this down to twenty thousand. We were still making an effort to start the process of reducing uh tuitions. And maybe next year, it can be a higher number, but we, if we continue, you know, a little bit each year, we're at least moving in the right direction. So this shows you the total of what, uh, two hundred and twenty thousand increase. The next slide. The reductions that we made to get, to get to those numbers, so.
Welcome back, Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you, yeah, a little, uh, little blackout here. I think I, I kicked my battery cord. And, uh, lo and behold, lucky I had made, uh, Sue a co-host, so we didn't have to.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of excitement there, a lot of reason to be kicking, so understandable.
Right?
Pardon me for that.
All right, sorry for the interruption, Mrs. Owen.
That's okay, that's okay. Um, so we had a, a point five um reduction to social studies teacher at the middle school. Based on enrollment, we don't need a one point O, we have a retirement, so no one's losing their job. We're just gonna hire back a point five rather than a one point O. There was an ESP, a one point O ESP at the Deer Hill that didn't, we didn't fill this year. Um, and Ms. Principal Sullivan thinks that she can probably go without it if we haven't filled it by now. Point five elementary teacher will be moved, um, part of the salary will be moved to the Medco grant, because we currently don't have any teachers being paid for the Medco grant. A decrease in utilities based on historical data, um, I just, I went through the last few years, I went through what the bills look like. And I could safely say, um, conservatively thirty thousand dollars, I could, I could reduce. And then, as a, as a team effort, the decrease to supplies, materials, district-wide, um, which was a makeup of things. Some of it was PD, some of it was supplies and materials, some of it was, um, accounts that weren't, we weren't expending the whole amount, so, you know, principals and administrators said, okay, we can reduce. So that brought us down to a, a savings of, or reduction of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And this is the worksheet, and I don't know if it's, I don't know how to make it bigger. But this, we've seen before, this is kind of the summary sheet that I've used. It gives you, um, again, the steps and lanes, the rule of the costs, the decreases in circuit breaker and sped. Then it gives you the staffing increases, so all the numbers, you know, are the same of what we just went through. And then down below, you can see, it's a six hundred and eighteen thousand. Oh, no. How do we go back? Back, there. Six hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and twenty-three um dollar increase, which is exactly what the town is allotting us at this point, which is a two point nine five percent increase, which is, you know, I feel that as a team, we did a tremendous job, two point nine five. When we were up close to five percent at one point, so we really worked hard and were thoughtful on where we were gonna look at, it squeezing some, some savings. We're getting down to be a bone, so hopefully in the coming years, um, our funding will, will be better. The next slide is just, just some information from the state that gives you an idea of what our FY, um, they haven't updated for FY twenty yet, but this is our people's spending and how it's broken down. By cost center and their, and their consideration, like administration, what the makeup is, um, district versus the state. And it goes through the administration, instructional leadership teachers, so you can kind of get an idea of what, um, few people in district and, and state averages, more just, just, you know, update for information. Um, FTEs, I know we had a conversation about FTEs, and tried to get a clearer look at our total FTEs, but where they were funded from. So I pulled this together. I did have a conversation with the town accountant and with Dusty. And I, I am, my understanding is correct that the, our school budget should reflect truly the FTEs that are paid from the school budget. And then if we have other FTEs, we list where they're funded from. So this is what, this is kind of a starting point. This is what I did. So you can see the first, first call, uh, row is school budget, you know, FTEs by administrative teacher, paraprofessionals, custodian, secretary, bus, to give us a total of two hundred and sixteen. And then if you look at the grants, it's the same type of breakdown, but we, actually, the grants fund about fourteen point one FTEs. And then our revolving funds, like kindergarten, transportation, um, athletics, they fund nineteen point two percent. Cafeteria is a big one, um, and then half of the bus driver, half of the bus driver salaries come from there. So it gives you the breakdown of the FTEs, and there's a total of two hundred and forty-nine point four one FTEs at this point. That's where we stand today. Let's see, what do I have next? Um, enrollment, again, so the enrollment on the left is twenty twenty-one, um, which we saw earlier. And then the enrollment on the right is, if I just, if I roll those classrooms, those sections forward, it's, so far, we have ninety-four um full-day K registrations, so I plugged in that number, and then all the other grades just move up one. So next year, enrollment's down a little bit. It's about thirteen seventy-six from fourteen oh nine. Um, and you can see, you know, the schools, the schools pretty much, you know, a close, middle school seems to have the biggest drop. And this is a sheet that's, that's, comes month to month, from year to year, comparison of enrollment. Um, and I'm not sure if this is the enrollment sheet that, um, Mrs. Ma was looking for. Ellen, is this the one? Is Ellen gone too?
Yeah, no, I'm here. Yes, it is.
Oh, there you are, okay. Sorry, I was like, I can't see you.
No, that's okay.
Okay. Um, and another, you know, just another, just informational, uh, on a circuit breaker, and, and what's it look like in the last years? You know, how many students, our eligible expenses, what our net claim was, what the reimbursement rate was, what the reimbursement amount was, so you can see how the numbers have changed, um, from year to year. And the reimbursement rates have also changed from year to year. So I'm trying to, trying to, um, give more historical data as well, so we can, we can follow the trends. And again, these are, these are just Ausgood School priorities are listed here. The Deer Hill priorities are listed here. And then we have the middle and the high school. Future budget concerns, you know, the introduction of the free kindergarten, I, I mean, I would love to have a larger number there. And maybe we can increase it if more money comes from the town, you know, we'll have to meet as a team to, to decide where, where we're going to place that money if we do indeed get more money. We're in the middle of, or the beginning phases of developing a new five-year strategic plan. You know, we need the ongoing need to support the social emotional learning. We're watching enrollment trends, the technology integration, um, and the computer science curriculum. So those are, you know, just some of our budget concerns that we're, we're looking at. And then questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Owen, that was great. Um, um, Mrs. Collier, do you have any questions for Ms. Owen relative to her, um, her budget update?
Uh, not specifically, is, is, this isn't the presentation we're planning to use as capital budget, right?
No.
It's an update for tonight.
No, this isn't capital, this is, this is FY twenty-two, so.
Right.
No.
Oh, sorry, I mean, are we presenting this to anyone else? No.
This is just a budget update for the.
That's for us.
This is for us. Um, I'm not sure, I have, the public forum is next week, I believe. And I was gonna use something similar to this, unless you have something.
No, no, so I just, I will go, I just have like minor, like, detail slash clerical things that are not important enough to go through here, but I will do an email, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kearney, do you have any questions?
Uh, first of all, Su- uh, Mrs. Owen, great job. This is not easy. This is not easy. And, um, thi- this is, I guess, uh, full-time employees, that's what FTE means, correct?
That's right.
Okay, I'm just trying to, like, I, I'm trying to just, there's a lot of, um, people listening, and I just want to try to.
So FTE is full-time equivalency.
Yeah, and then sometimes we use a lot of codes, and, uh, sometimes you, I don't know if, um, the, the, the public understands what we're talking, but I just wanted to make that clear. Yeah, the, uh, it just goes to show that there, there is some things that we, we do have some kind of a wish list, um, that we're not getting. I, I guess we're gonna get an increase of two point eight percent, isn't that correct? And, um, we asked for five percent, is, is, do we have the exact number yet?
We, we, we actually, you know, our, our wish list was up close to five. We did meet with the town manager, um, and the town accountant, and he gave us the go-ahead with the two point nine five. So that's the number that we worked with. It was the six hundred and eighteen thousand, so we, we knew what, we knew what our target was. We didn't remove any positions that we're at, that we were asking for, um, which was good. We just, um, we went after supplies, materials, we went after positions that hadn't been filled, um.
Right.
And we just kindergarten.
Yeah, no, that's great, and, and, and it's not easy. You gotta, you gotta take from this account, put it in that account, and, uh, it's, it's not a, it's not an easy process, and we appreciate it. And, uh, when, when will we be voting on this budget? Do we know, guys?
Um, I don't have the budget calendar in front of me. I know the public forum is next week.
The public forum is on Wednesday.
Yes.
Mrs. Mar?
Yeah, so it's not a public forum, it's a public hearing required by law, that our budget is, we have a public hearing as opposed to a meeting being held in public. So there's a distinction
Okay.
uh, for anyone to participate and come in and ask questions, and then we vote on the budget after the hearing. So that's, so we're, next week would be the date to, to vote on the budget. At some point in the future, the near future, end of March, maybe beginning of April, we will have to present to advisory and the Board of Selectmen.
But in the meantime, next week, if folks want to ask some questions about the budget, that would be the time to ask, is that correct?
Yes, at the public hearing.
Okay, so if you want to advocate, um, I'm just throwing this out to the public. If you want to advocate for a, a, a computing science teacher, just to throw that out there for the middle high school, high school and needs a computer science, this would be a good chance to hear your voice. So, you know, uh, the, it, sometimes people say, ah, I'm just one voice, but it matters. We had someone come in and, uh, e- as early as last year, or maybe even this year, and advocated for, uh, a, a nurse at the middle school, and we got one. So, no, your voices are heard here. It's a small community. And take time to look through that budget, because it's, it's twenty-one million dollar budget. And if you, if you have any input, we'd love to hear it, um, because we don't have all the answers. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Mr. Kearney, it's important to note, that would be the only opportunity. I mean, obviously, we're gonna be voting on the budget next, uh, week, but, you know, that's, you know, making certain concessions that we need to make in order to, uh, make sense of it, as, you know, Ms. Owen's been able to work with what the town is gonna give us. But if, when we're presenting to, like, as, as Ms. Mar just, uh, mentioned, you know, it'd be a presentation to the, um, advisory and select board, and, you know, interested parties can obviously make voices known then too. Not that it will necessarily result in the desired funds, but it'll, uh, make a voice heard in the, uh, in the hopes that it may have an impact in the future in our ability to, um, you know, obtain, uh, additional funding to that effect. Um, and Mrs. Mar, thank you so much for clarifying the process, um, for everyone. I think that's, uh, pretty helpful. So where are we? Uh, was, uh, we had, I don't know who, who did I call on last? I couldn't remember. I can't remember where I, where I am. Mrs. Mar, was it your turn?
I just ended.
Okay, so Mrs. Mar, do you have any questions?
Um, yes, I do. Thank you, and I, I want to apologize to my colleagues and the leadership team for not being able to be at the meeting Thursday night. I had a change in travel plans, um, so I'm sorry. So please forgive some of the questions that you might have talked about a- already. The, so, two point nine five percent. The middle school reading specialist, point five, I mean, we haven't had one. It, it, it is, is the point five what we can afford, or does point five fill the need?
What we can afford. Um, the need is really one point O, Ellen. And I think that was, I know that if, if we do end up getting funding coming our way, in my view, and I believe the, I speak for the full leadership view, that is right at the top of the list. Um, it's, it's very needed, and, uh, they go be implemented very well. So it is, it is really in need of a one point O, but it's what we can afford at point five.
Okay, so, so that being said, we're looking for another point five in social studies, you know, because of the, the subscription to the electives offered in, in that discipline, as well as the AP offerings. And I'll go back again and ask again, now that we have enrollment numbers, where we're showing the high school down nineteen, and that doesn't even account for the anywhere from, you know, thirteen to twenty kids who, excuse me, go to private school from eighth grade to ninth grade. Have we looked at all the other disciplines who don't have electives being subscribed to? Because they're all subscribing to social studies electives. And have we critically looked at, um, course load and caseload in those disciplines? Because I would say the critical need is the middle reading specialist, and I would say, go for the one point O there now, lock it in. And if funding comes the way, then we add the point five. But if, if we keep adding to social studies, which we have been doing for the last three years, something else, other classes aren't being taken, and we don't make any cuts.
That's a thoughtful, uh, consideration. You know, I think that, um, as we look, as we're looking at all the budget items, I think that's a, a good conversation, particularly for Dr. Scollins, to circle back and.
I think that's a good conversation, particularly for Dr. Scollins to circle back and, and talk with Principal Scott and team. Now, I know that that was deferred from last year. I believe, because I think we had done a .5 last year. Could be wrong on that, but I think so.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that was part of it. But, um, yeah, no, that's very thoughtful and not necessarily wrong. But I just think it's something that, you know, I deferred to Dr. Scollins on that.
Mrs. Mark, you just reiterate that thought for me. I just, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not, this isn't my strong suit. So I wanna, I wanna sort of, I don't know, really understand what you're saying.
So, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, we have an incredibly strong social studies department. With offerings and electives that engage and interest the high school kids. And part of this .5 is to maintain or increase that ability to have those offerings as well as offer, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Scollins, another section of AP macro or micro, whichever sequencing we're in at, at this particular point in time. My point being with a declining enrollment, Chairman McClellan, which doesn't account for the natural loss of students going from eighth grade to ninth grade going into private school. There have to be classes that are undersubscribed that we don't run, which means we have staff that may or may not be fully utilized. And I, I don't disagree with the need for social studies. You know, a, a .5, I, I agree more that the priority is for the middle school reading specialist. Because if a kid can't get into conspiracy theory or one of the other electives, there's other disciplines they can, they can choose from. They can take an English elective. They can take a science elective. If we don't have enough subscription, enough for the middle school reading specialist, we're not gonna serve the needs of the kids. They, they can't go to science instead of going to a reading specialist. So I feel personally the reading specialist is much more of a priority, especially in the middle school where it's been such a void for, for several years than, than the .5 social studies teacher.
Yeah, and if you consider learning gaps too, coming up with reading, I think it reinforces your advocate, you know, advocating for it even more. Mrs. Mar, so.
That's a great point. Thank you for explaining it as you would a fifth grader, to a fifth grader. Mrs. Mar, I'm sorry that I require, I required everyone to sit through that twice. I just.
No, it's good.
I knew it was important. I just couldn't totally grasp it the first time around. So I wanted to understand what you were saying. Thank you.
Yep. So that's, so my next question is the .5 elementary out of the MECCO grant. I'm shocked and pleased that that's a possibility because in six years, it's never, it's never even been broached as, as a funding source.
Yeah, I give Sue credit for that. It is, it is happening in other districts that have MECCO programs. So it seems, and I, I will say there has, there, there have been times when we, not that we struggle to, to fulfill the MECCO grant, but we're looking to kind of be creative with it. And this is, I think, a lot more practical use of those funding. So I, I appreciate Sue's fresh perspective for us on that, not for her, because she's done this before, but.
Yeah, no, that's terrific. I think it's great. And, and so, and on the, on the FTEs, Mrs. Owens, I guess my, my point about understanding where they were coming from, whether it was the operational budget or grants are revolving, is the fact that we'll get challenged, particularly by advisory about the FTEs, because all the benefits come on the town side. So even though the salary doesn't come out of our operational budget, the benefits come out of the town side. And we constantly get challenged on that and, and what the whole rollout cost is. Now, it looks like we're only up 1.0 from last year, which, which is good. But I'm not sure I have questions. That doesn't include our director of technology as a 1.0 because that position was not in our original FY 21 budget.
Correct, but it, but because it's in the FY 21 now, it's, it's, when we do the rollover, it's included. So you're right. I, I hear what you're saying. I totally agree. But we've, we've added it, not, not from the voted 21 budget, but the actual working 21 budget. We've added the point that one, that, that position in the .5 nurse, that's, but that's been added. And then it just rolled into next year.
Right, but when, but when we present, we typically present budget to budget because we don't have all of the current year in. So, so when we present budget to budget, it's gonna, it's gonna show more. And that's all I'm saying. And so then on, that was, you segued nicely for me. So the middle school nurse, we funded at a .5. Is it remaining at a .5 for next year?
It's still in there as a .5 for next year.
It's in there for .5 for next year. Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Okay, but Ellen, I want to make sure I, we were all on the same page with that. Because when you said .5, that was when we added the nurse before, because right now we have a 1.0.
Correct.
So that's funded within the budget.
Oh, so, so the .5, okay, so the .5 wasn't in the increase then. So, so we had .5 in the budget and it's a 1.0 because of the CARES grant.
That's correct.
So it's, it's a 1.0 in the operational budget for next year.
That's correct.
So it's a .5 increase.
That's correct.
Budget to budget.
That's, that's, that's the way I look at it, Sue. Incorrect?
I thought we only hired, so I'm thinking, we hired a halftime nurse through the CARES grant.
Correct. And we had a halftime nurse to begin with.
Okay, so I'm just thinking of that, so the halftime nurse that we had to begin with. And then we had, we added a halftime nurse from the CARES grant. It rolled into our FTEs and it rolled into next year.
Okay, but Ellen, to your map and your, and the way you're looking at it, I would put that .5 position that we get from the CARES grant in the same boat as the director of technology position.
Right, right. It, it came in once, once, you know, the fiscal year opened.
Yeah.
But I, I think if you go back and if you look at prior budget presentations, you'll, you'll see that they're, you know, the proposed budget against last year's budget, not last year's actual, because you don't have last year's actual in.
Okay, I'll go, I can go back and look.
Yeah, I know, I know exactly what you're saying, Sue, but I also know what Ellen is saying, so.
Right, I, I know, I totally understand.
And, and the town is gonna talk about post-employment, post-employment benefits. You know, my retort to that is very respectfully, that in order to grow a school system, you are gonna need to add positions and you are gonna need to do that very, you know, intentionally and with data-based. I, I don't think we had a position-rich district to begin with. So that would be my retort respectfully to that. But I do understand the concern and I totally get where Ellen's coming from with the fact that they will bring that up.
Yeah, it's not just post-employment. It, it's also health insurance. So the town, the town will pay whatever, whatever benefits are accorded to them, either via, you know, collective bargaining agreements or contracts. And, and I think, and I'm not disagreeing with you, Dr. Sullivan, about, you know, the need to grow the district in, in a, in a way and, and fill, fulfill the needs of, of the students to provide the best education possible. But the mindset in this town and maybe in many other towns is with a declining enrollment, you cut staff. So, um, the good news is we have some former school committee members on advisory, but they also have a fiduciary responsibility to the town. So I'm just throwing it up there. It's gonna be something we're gonna have to navigate and talk through in a persuasive way.
No, I appreciate the perspective.
And so that was it for my questions for now. Thank you, Mrs. Owen. Great job.
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mrs. Ainge.
Um, no questions specifically. I would like to say that I agree with Ms. Mar that any opportunity to have a full-time reading specialist rather than a .5 would be preferred, of course. It's just so important to continue to provide that support, not only to students, but to, to staff because a reading specialist does both in the middle school level. Also, Ms. Owen, I really just want to thank you for the time you spent with us the other night with our finance workshop. I feel like I'm, I have a better understanding of the budget and am able to better follow you tonight. So I appreciate it. I am learning a lot.
I am, you know, and we can continue to do, do meetings like that or even one, you know, one-to-one to get, to get as much involved as you want to get involved. I know Ashley's chomping at the bit.
Yep, I'm diving in headfirst with Mrs. Collier tomorrow, so watch out. Your new budget, your new budget gurus. Good learning here. So thank you. Thank you for that time.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you for that, Mrs. Ainge. Does that, that conclude, I'm sorry, Dr. Sullivan?
I was just here, we have some, we have some deep cleaning happening here. It threw me off. And it's our deep cleaning. It's Wednesday, so if you wonder why I was reacting, I apologize.
All right, Ms. Owen, does that conclude your budget update?
Yes, it does. There's just no more questions.
Okay, seeing none, we'll, we'll move on to the school committee section of the agenda. The first agenda item, in that, I just, hold on a second. I just see a question come in from Jean Healy Dipold of 93 South Main Street. In light of the space and faculty, excuse me, space and facility constraints, getting late, I can't read, relating to reopening the middle and high schools, can you discuss what costs exist, including any costs for contingency plans for next year to ensure those schools fully reopen? How are those costs reflected in the proposed budget?
I, I guess what I'd add there is, you know, we're gonna be discussing some of this anyway next week. However, you know, to, to add to that, we do have the, the grant, the S R 2 that is coming in and that really is specifically for trying to do things like open schools. So that is absolutely something we can look at to spend our funding on. I'm not quite sure how we would be able to, like, what would be able to do. It might be, you know, it could be different furniture, it could be, I'm not sure. And, and again, with the sort of standards kind of shifting and the goalposts moving, it's hard to express that right now, except to know that, that we're, that would be something we'd probably look to apply funds that are in the S R and also that may be coming additionally to schools to do. Would you say that's correct, Sue? That's probably my best answer right now.
Yeah, I mean, again, I mean, the middle and high school issue, the reopening of middle and high school and our ability to welcome all the students back, I mean, it's, we're turning to that next week, you know, and, and I think those considerations, that's what we're looking at. I mean, you know, what are we gonna do? I mean, what, we don't even know what costs exist because we don't know exactly what needs to be done yet. I mean, we're gonna be assessing that. So I, I think it's a little premature to answer the question. But, but again, as I stated at the outset of the discussions around the elementary schools, that, the, the preliminary discussion surrounding the reopening of middle and high schools, I shouldn't say reopening, but, you know, the, the repopulation of those buildings with the full student body is on the agenda for next week or will be on the agenda for next week. So, you know, in addition to the, to the budget hearing that we'll be having. And, and I think that may be a more appropriate time to have a little bit more of an informed discussion about it at that time.
Yeah, I would think. And again, the biggest restriction is just space, flat out. It's not so much what's in the space, but absolutely.
Okay, Ms. Owen, does that conclude your budget update? It does. Okay, so school committee comments communication, first agenda item in that is the school facilities committee. I, I was asking for, I was, I was gonna ask, seek a vote on this because, I don't know if I updated this last time, the, there have been five applications received by town hall. That makes a quorum for that nine-member committee. The school committee gets to nominate three individuals, the town moderator nominates three, and the select board nominates three. And so there are two current school committee members that volunteered for this just to, I think, get the ball rolling here and make sure that we get a quorum. Those members are myself and Mr. Kearney. And in addition, another, an elementary school parent, Kathleen Burns, has also applied. And there are two other individuals that the select board, I think, are considering. But those were the three, and I, I had sort of last minute sent the resumes or the applications, I should say, to other members of the school committee. I don't know. It was, it was sort of a, it was, I, I did it sort of this afternoon. So if, if people don't feel comfortable enough taking a vote, all, all the vote would be is to approve the nominees. These three nominees as the school committee nominees. But I, I don't know what people feel if there's, if there's any discussion on this. We can, we can have Mrs. Collier. We can just move, move in alphabetical order here.
I do not have any discussion on it. I would be fine with voting to approve those nominations tonight if the other members of the committee are comfortable with that.
Okay, Mr. Kearney, you and I have to abstain ourselves from the vote. So, Mrs. Mar, what do you, what's your position on this issue?
Sorry, I'm, I'm just seeing your email now. You, you know, I, I think if anyone volunteers, and it's not like we have a cadre of volunteers to choose from, I would definitely say, yes, let's just do it and vote.
Okay, Mrs. Ainge, I mean, this is, you three are gonna be the ones voting. So if you guys are comfortable with it, then, then I can, I can, Mrs. Ainge, what's your position?
I had a chance to review them, so I feel comfortable voting.
All right, so I'll just take a motion and Paul, you, you don't, don't participate in this. And I won't either, but I'll ask for a motion to approve the three nominees. Those nominees being Paul Kearney, Craig McClellan, and Kathleen Burns for the school facilities committee, the three school committee nominees. Is there a motion of that effect?
I moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Collier. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ainge. All in favor, Mrs. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Abstaining.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. Ainge?
Aye.
Abstaining, Craig McClellan. That motion passes three to two, three, three ayes, two abstentions. So I will let the select board know that we approved those nominees. I, I think they may have approved these last night, but I could be wrong, could be at the next meeting that they're doing that. And then I will give a report or Paul will give a report once this sort of, this committee starts meeting. Thank you all. Next is the reports from the subcommittee positions or liaison positions. Are there any reports from anyone? We'll go around, Mrs. Collier. No. Mr. Kearney, any reports?
Uh, no reports other than, again, thank you for those hydro stations. I got that email today that was very uplifting. And it, it's, it's nice to know that we're, we're making progress and I appreciate it, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Mar, any updates or reports?
Um, no subcommittee reports. I, I just wanted to, you know, probably all of you know by now, I've discussed it with Chairman McClellan. And I did put something on Facebook. I'm not running again for school committee at the end of, you know, at the end of my term, which expires this year. And I, I posted it in the hopes that somebody who might not want to run against an incumbent decided to pull papers. So to get it out there, papers were available at town hall, I think, February 8th or 9th or something. You just have to get 50 signatures of local residents to get your name on the ballot. And I encourage, I don't know how many participants we have left, but I encourage anyone who has a passion for the schools. You don't have to have any particular, you know, talent or acumen or anything. Just desire, heart, passion for the schools to run. It's incredibly fulfilling and rewarding, challenging, frustrating, exciting, all, all those things. And I don't think there's a more worthy elected position in our town than school committee because, because we deal with our most precious asset, which are the children of Cohasset. So anyone listening out there, please, please consider a run. And it's, you know, it, it's great. You'll be walking onto a committee of very committed. And um, it's, you know, it it's great. You'll be walking onto a committee of very committed, passionate people. Um, and so that that's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar, for those thoughtful comments. Um.
Mar, while I don't think that anyone could ever fill your shoes, I just want you to know that I really appreciate your service. And I dread slash look forward to learning a lot more about the budget because we're going to need to in your absence. So thank you for your stewardship and all of the all of the many hours of work, baby.
Yeah, I'm not going to stop calling.
She'll stay with me for like seven more meetings or however many more, so.
And I'm just going to keep calling her anyway, so just for the record, so.
She's not going anywhere yet, so um, yeah, all right. Um, Mrs. Ainge, do you have any updates?
Um, we did meet with the Deer Hill School Council, which I kind of spoke to in my back to full time comments. Um, the alternative energy committee met, I don't know, last week maybe. Um, and we had an interesting presentation from a company that kind of acts as a middleman, a middle person. I don't even know how to say that. A middle person um, for getting electric buses into school districts. Um, Mrs. Owen, I sent you an email over vacation, which was probably poorly timed to over vacation, and I can resend it. But um, after viewing the presentation, we're still intrigued by the possibility of electric buses. But we're wondering if rather than going through this company, we could swing it on our own just with the know-how of the alternative energy committee in order to navigate like alternative energy grants and so many things. So um, it's something that's being explored. Um, as more information comes along, I can share it with you, but it's just interesting that it's that it's on the table. And kind of just figuring out how to best approach it um, for our district. So that's, that's the update.
Okay, um, thank you, Mrs. Ainge. No updates from me. Um, so we'll move on to the uh, next agenda item, which is approval minutes. Uh, my understanding is we may have some next meeting, but we do not have any this meeting to approve.
Can I ask a question, though?
You sure may.
Mrs. Collier, did we have any policy subcommittee adjustments to 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 do or no?
Out to my recollection. I anticipate having some next week, though.
Okay, okay, just checking. Yeah, and no minutes this week, but next week I will have them.
Well, we'll all be looking forward to that. Um, okay, there are no topics uh, not reasonably anticipated and no reason that I know of to move into executive session. So at this point, I'd uh, ask for a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn made by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Collier. All in favor, Mrs. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. Ainge?
Aye.
Hi, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously passes. The meeting is adjourned. Great job tonight, guys. That was a a really great meeting for the kids.
Great job.
Thank you, everyone.
We've already received our email from Mrs. Farrell, so she is ready to rock. Love it.
That's going out in a couple minutes. Take care, everybody.